Congregate in this council chamber for the betterment of our fellow citizens. Lead us that we may do all things well. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation founded on political liberty and justice.
All right, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Ray Colberston?
Here.
Mr. Schultmyer?
Present.
Mr. Bob Colberston?
Here.
Mrs. Beddinghouse?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Housefeld?
Here.
Let the record show that all seven members are present and no members are absent. Members of council, what is your pleasure on the reading of the last minutes?
Mr. President?
Ms. Beddinghouse?
I make a motion to dispense with the reading from the last, um, for the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
A motion by Ms. Beddinghouse, second by Ms. Housefeld, to dispense with the reading of the last minutes. Are there any remarks? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Members of council, are there any errors or corrections to the minutes as submitted? Not the minutes will stand as submitted. We'll move to reports of city officials. Mayor Stutcher.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to start by congratulating the St. Bernard Elementary School for no longer being designated for the Ohio Ed Choice Program. St. Bernard Elementary's performance index rating met the threshold criteria set by Ohio state legislators on the last two issued Ohio school report cards. Their hardworking staff and students continue to focus their efforts on increased performance and academic excellence. So again, congratulations. As you have probably already heard, or you certainly will during the safety chair's report, there has been an uptick in vehicle thefts and personal items being stolen from vehicles. Police are working very hard to catch these individuals, but I am pleading with you to please lock your vehicles, remove any keys and other personal items. The police department has also stepped up traffic enforcement around the village and continue to address the issues. I will be working with some consultants on traffic calming around the village where modifications could purposely slow vehicles down. Hopefully, we can make these changes. We have received some estimates for speed humps, and we've also be adding some speed monitoring devices around the village as well. The service director will be working with a painting contractor for the line change for Ross Avenue, and the installation of service mount breakway delionators will take place as well to prevent vehicles from being able to drive on the eastbound lane closest to the cemetery. I have also been asked whether we could have another cleanup St. Bernard Day, and I am asking Mr. Traburki if he would assist in organizing this event since he is very experienced in that area. Lastly, we are under, we are now under contract so that we can build a Village of Elmwood Place for EMS responses, and that is effective as of April 12th. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Auditor, Ms. Brickwick.
Thank you, Mr. President. The auditor's office has finished preparing all the reports for the state auditor, and they will be arriving on Monday to start our audit, so be prepared if they have any questions for any of you. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Director of law, Ms. Tim Wolkenberg.
Thank you. I'm at Liz Davening with the Laws, Contracts and Claims Committee and members of the public to review the potential nondiscrimination ordinance. We unfortunately didn't have as much information as I had hoped about cost. Continue to reach out to some of the other communities, including City of Cincinnati, to see what kind of costs that they've had. That's an ongoing process. I hope to have more information ahead of the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer, Mr. Ungru.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening I have this bank statement from FERC State Bank for the Fourth of July Memorial Fund that we have with them at the end of last month. The village's total there is $5,657.31. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Safety and service director, Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. My spring reminder for you is to please mow your lawn. Grass above eight inches in our village is against our ordinances, your ordinances. You will be fined. High grass and weeds are the number one complaint in our village. Please mind your property. To my community, reflections, there are basically a couple of different types of them now that I reflect on it. You can reflect on something while it is happening or after it has already happened. You can reflect light also as a smooth or scattered reflection. What about that reflection in the mirror? Is there something there that you are doubting? Perhaps you need to adjust until that reflection turns bright and the lights surround you for others to see. If you like what you see, then reveal it to others. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Tax commissioner, slayer administrator, Ms. Elms.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the report for March 2021. Tax collections for March were $1,187,337. Refunds for March were $7,918. The village is down 10.45% in tax revenue from March of 2020. The village is down 7.81% for the first quarter of 2021 versus the first quarter of 2020. $64,531 in delinquent taxes with capital recovery, $103,267 in delinquent taxes with our attorney for judgment garnishment collection work, $46,447 is with the Ohio Attorney General's Office. Couple reminders, taxes are due by May 17th, 2021. Please do not put your social security number on your check. Other people process and view that check besides me. I want to protect your identity. Do not email your tax return. It will not be accepted or considered filed. Please use the e-file portal located on the village's website. If you have any questions, please call the office at 242-7710. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll move to reports of standing committees. Finance, Mr. Traburki.
No report.
Thank you. Safety, Mr. Ray Colberston.
Thanks, Mr. President. First of all, I have the fire department report for March. There was a total of 25 fire incidents, five of those being structure fires, three of them auto accidents. Mutual aid from the fire department was given to Norwood once, Elmwood Place twice, Redding once, and Delhi once. Mutual aid was received from Norwood twice, once from Elmwood Place, once from Redding, once from Little Miami, once from Springfield Township, and once for Wyoming. On the EMS side, there was a total of 85 EMS incidents, which included one non-breather, one unconscious, four auto accidents, and three overdoses. A mutual aid on the EMS side was given to Elmwood Place 30 times, Little Miami four times, Springfield Township once, Cincinnati once, and Lachlan once. Mutual aid was not received on the EMS side in the month of March. I would like to remind all the residents that the next block watch meeting will be Thursday, May 6th at 6:30 p.m. in Centennial Hall. Chief Simos will be there to discuss the ongoing issues in our town and to answer any questions. And I'd like to thank the mayor this time for his work on correcting some of the traffic concerns and, or at least starting to correct some of the traffic concerns in town. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Service, Mr. Schultmyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the service department report for March 2021. The service department placed 32 trucks at residences, 34 dumpsters at residences, 417 special pickups, 185 tons of garbage taken to landfill. Recycling, we had 53.49 tons of recycling material, 12 pounds of scrap aluminum, 33 pounds of brass, 29 pounds of copper, and 3,578 pounds of scrap metal. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Public improvements, Mr. Bob Colberston.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next CIC meeting is Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. in council chambers. We'll hopefully be discussing Long John Silver's and hopefully the next steps in that progress with that building. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Laws, contracts and claims, Ms. Beddinghouse.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Laws, Contracts and Claims Committee met on Wednesday 4/21 to finalize the content of a proposed ordinance to prohibit unlawful discrimination within the Village of St. Bernard. The committee's next step will be to hold a town hall meeting that will be both virtual and in person. We are planning the town hall to take place summertime, midsummer. Since we don't know if there will still be limited capacity at in-person gatherings because of COVID-19, there will be a survey in the main newsletter asking if you would attend this event in person. We are just trying to get a projection of the number of in-person attendees to see how to accommodate if we are limited in our capacity. There will also be a link in the main newsletter that will take you to the ordinance. It is rather lengthy, and this will give people time to read through it and think of questions you might have that could be addressed at the town hall meeting. On May 19th, the Laws, Contracts and Claims Committee will meet at 6:30 p.m. in Centennial Hall to plan for the town hall meeting. More to come after that meeting. I want to thank Nicole Klungle, the employee, or the Equality Ohio reps, Mindy, Valerie, Jonathan, Ray, Chris, for all the time and help in they, and help in getting this ordinance finally completed. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Marketing, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of things. First, a newsletter request for information will go out to everyone on Monday, April the 26th. I need everything back by Monday, May 3rd. I also have a recreation update. The deadline to sign your child up for T-ball is Friday, April 30th. You can sign up at City Hall, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This opportunity is for all resident children, three to six years in age. Games are Mondays and Thursdays in June at Vine Street Park. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Business and industry, Ms. Housefeld.
No report.
Thank you. Ms. Kathman has submitted the committee of the whole to the administration and council. Is there any communications? None? All right. At this time, I will ask the clerk to give the first reading of ordinance number nine, 2021.
This is number nine, 2021. Next week, the 2021 compensation for the swim team coach of the Village of St. Bernard and declaring an emergency.
Members of council, you've heard the first reading of ordinance number nine, 2021. What is your pleasure?
Mr. President?
Ms. Beddinghouse?
I make a motion to suspend with the second and third reading of ordinance number nine, 2021.
I second that.
A motion by Ms. Beddinghouse, second by Mr. Ray Colberston, to suspend with the second and third reading of ordinance number nine, 2021. Are there any remarks? If not, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address council on ordinance nine? Please state your name and address for the record.
Nicole Klungle, 551 Church Street. Would you mind reading the title again? The microphone was off, so I didn't catch it.
All right. It's fixing the 2021 compensation for the head swim team coach of the Village of St. Bernard and declaring an emergency.
Thanks so much.
Anyone else? If not, clerk, will you call the roll on suspension?
Mr. Traburki?
Aye.
Mr. Ray Colberston?
Aye.
Mr. Schultmyer?
Aye.
Mr. Bob Colberston?
Aye.
Mrs. Beddinghouse?
Aye.
Mrs. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Housefeld?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Members of council, what is your pleasure on adoption?
Mr. President?
Ms. Beddinghouse?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number nine, 2021.
I'll second that.
A motion by Ms. Beddinghouse, second by Ms. Housefeld, to adopt ordinance number nine, 2021. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Traburki? Aye.
Mr. Ray Colberston?
Aye.
Mr. Schultmyer?
Aye.
Mr. Bob Colberston?
Aye.
Mrs. Beddinghouse?
Aye.
Mrs. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Housefeld?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Ordinance number nine, 2021 is adopted as read. This time, we will move to, does anyone in council have anything under old business?
Mr. President?
Ms. Miller.
Um, yeah, Cindy and Valerie, I have some residents contacting me in regards to the Airbnb issues, and I know that we've been wrapping up this other thing, but I think that we probably need to look to try to get something on the calendar to have a meeting and allow these folks to come and speak about it. Somebody approached me again this week, actually, in regards to it, so we can work on that.
Mr. President?
Ms. Beddinghouse?
Thanks, Mindy. Uh, yeah, Jonathan and I have talked about that, so I'll just get with him because he was waiting for some other things, so we'll do that.
Okay. Mr. President, just related to that, as far as, I know we've scheduled another meeting as far as for the Laws, Contracts and Claims Committee. As far as whether or not we could try to work with Valerie to determine, you know, can we go ahead and start moving forward with at least an initial discussion? I know that we're, you know, trying to work through the anti-discrimination ordinance, which has taken up a lot of time when, and is obviously well justified, but could we start at least working towards a plan and whether that could be discussed potentially at the next meeting? Since we're already going to be together, could we at least maybe work out a, you know, maybe a timeline as to what, how we might want to approach that?
Mr. President?
Ms. Beddinghouse?
Jonathan, are you referencing when we meet for Laws, Contracts and Claims again? That, that topic also is discussed?
Yes, if that's possible. If at least, at least, you know, work out a timeframe as to when we might be able to at least work towards that. And I've had, I've had, you know, again, similar contacts, you know, as Ms. Miller has as well. So I think it definitely is time, and again, as the potential change around the village, and there may be some increase in potential Airbnb options as well. And I have also been in contact with, with some other very responsible Airbnb owners that would like to participate potentially in working with us to try to put together, you know, the proper ordinance. So I think it can be representative, represented from both sides as well.
So I will make sure that that's posted as both topics to be discussed on that Laws, Contracts and Claims timeline for both.
Okay. Mr. Ray Colberston.
Got a question for Mr. Paul. I've been stopped and received several phone calls over the last few weeks about trash cans being left out, especially on the weekends, and just wondering what, do we, do we warn them and then find them, or how, how is that being handled?
Mr. President, thank you. So basically, when the cans are left out, that is against our ordinances again, so that typically is against the law. The problem being is if we try to let the sanitation department handle it, he has to catch it in the act. So if he comes into the village and the cans have been moved, he's wasted a trip. That's being said, it is against the law. So what we need to make the population aware of is that just because we went to Hamilton County doesn't mean you cannot make a phone call. You can use 2727 or 911. They are trained in all the workings of St. Bernard. So if that can is blocking the right of way, or left out on the wrong day, or the trash is out on the wrong day, that is a police call. So you, you can feel free to call 911 or 2727 and let them know your complaint, and they will address it. So I think people are intimidated because of the 911. They think that it's just for emergencies all the time, and it, 911 is prepared for the village complaints. Nothing has changed, and that's what's hard for them to see and accept because it, 911 has been drilled into everyone's head as that is an emergency number, but it's a way to communicate with your officers on the scene here in the village.
Sounds like an article for the main newsletter. Anyone else under old business?
Mr. President? Just a reminder, we also, tomorrow is the, is the deadline to sign up for the laborers' test for the service department. So if there is anyone that's interested, you still have time by the end of the business day tomorrow if you'd like to do so. So just wanted to touch on that. And one last thing also, possible with Mr. Traburki, would you be willing to assist if there was an interest in another cleanup St. Bernard Day because you are very experienced in that and have a plethora of pickers to distribute?
Most of my pickers have been donated to other people, so I'll have to go buy some more, but we'll work, we'll get together to talk about it.
Mr. Traburki.
Uh, Jonathan, the feedback on Mindy's, the Airbnb rental program. Robert Evans was out looking at grasses. He said he had problems figuring out owners or properties and that. We used to have a database downstairs with rental, with rental issues. Are we forgetting about that now, or what? It's been a couple years since?
I will, I will check with Mr. Stoker on that. He's, he has, he feels that there are other ways to handle that, and the inspection process itself was not effective, so I will address that with him as well on the database. But as far as the, the rental program, the way it was done previously is, is not, not in operation.
And then, um, I know there was a big discussion on Facebook about the parking at Tower and Jefferson. I, sorry, I talked to Reverend Dan today. On Tower Avenue in front of the church, it's handicap parking on Sundays from 9:00 to noon. On Jefferson, it's a blue stripe, handicap parking all the time. He's okay if you put a sign up there, handicap parking on Sundays, 9:00 to noon. That'll help alleviate some of that problem, parking up there.
As, Mr. President, yes, we could do that. So basically, what, what, if I understand properly, you're, you're stating that as of right now, that the, the handicap parking would only have to be enforced during the, during the, the Sundays during the, the church service hours, correct?
That's the way it is on Tower Avenue. It's, it's a sign there, handicap parking, 9:00 to noon Sundays.
Because basically, at this point, we have, you know, made the construction workers and the subcontractors on that job as well made very aware that there's no breaks. And I mean, I, I guess if we were to let them go back there, I mean, I would just soon leave it the way it is and enforce the fact that they should not be parking there and on that corner. Because again, they just kept abusing the privilege. Larger trucks would park there. They impeded the ability to probably approach that intersection to make a safe turn. I understand what he's saying, but we still would need to, it's something to talk about. So I think right now, we're, the way that it's sitting, where they're not parking there is, is well justified and gives a better approach during pickup and drop-off timeframe at the school.
I agree, but there are also parking on other streets right up to the curb. We're just stopping out there, so probably just move a little bit. But I guess for Tommy and you, are we gonna sell the old ambulances and the old electric truck?
Mr. President?
Mayor Stutcher.
So as of right now, that would be, we could do so. You know, there, I know there was discussion, there's actually another department that did approach us regarding the current, the ambulance that we have that would be interested in it. So I know that that, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, the requirements for selling from municipality to municipality are a little different than that of going out to what we've done previously in the government bid. But there is an interest locally, just a couple communities over, and no, not just the one we're under contract with, but the, but the, another, another municipality is interested in it. So I, I think while it has enough value, I think it would be worth, you know, exploring that. And as far as Mr. Paul's response on the electric truck and anything else we have, yes.
One last thing, it's probably better under new business, but looking through POs to see, we got a dive team member in the police department now. Can we get a listing of what all our police and fire, what all different organizations they, like USAR, dive team now, all that kind of stuff, SWAT? It seems like we got a lot of people in a lot of extracurricular activities for our small community.
Mr. President?
Mayor Stutcher.
Certainly, we can, we can do that. But as far as just, I understand that there is some cost to that, but at the same time, with our involvement between police and fire in mutual aid efforts and other cooperative efforts, whether it be in USAR, whether it be on the, on the police side, whether involved in, you know, Hamilton County Police Association SWAT team, you know, it does help to have people involved because again, we are the recipient of assistance when needed, but I will get you a list.
Mr. President?
Mr. Traburki.
I agree, it's helpful to have people involved, but if we're a community of 4,000 people, we got, what, 40 police and firemen approximately, if half our guys are involved in extracurricular activity like this, but if you go to Silverton, Fintetown, North Kite Hill, they've only got one or two guys, it just doesn't seem right to me that all of our guys are tied up, kind of, follow what I'm saying?
Anyone else under old business?
Mr. President?
Ms. Beddinghouse?
I forgot to add during my report that for all the council administration, for that ordinance, it will be online in the webs, on the website. However, if you want a hard copy, please reach out to Valerie. She can make you a copy and get it to you in your mailboxes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Old business? Does anyone in council have anything in their new business? If not, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address council this evening? If not, the next committee of the whole will be Thursday, May 13th at 7:00 p.m. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President?
Mr. Ray Colberston?
Make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mr. Ray Colberston, second by Ms. Housefeld, to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered, we are adjourned. Opposed? So ordered. We are adjourned.